Testing, testing, one, two, three. Testing, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
All right, we're going to get started because it's going to be a long night. Pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA, ten, four through ten, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, and on Cable Vision Channel 118, Verizon FiOS Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the township clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, May 20th, 2025. The Board will take formal action on payment of bills and other agenda items. Mr. Riddell?
The Old Bridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the board, have the right to record public board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided the act or recording does not interfere with the business of this public board meeting. Therefore, the board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual and in no manner represents the official record of this board. The board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Roll call, please.
Done.
Here.
Francisco.
Here.
Giordano.
Here.
Jodri.
Here.
Mazone.
Here.
Slade.
Here.
Solakowski.
Here.
Van Cetason.
You.
Dan Tuno.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Can we all please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance. Thank you. Ms. Mazone, can you do the ethics corner, please?
The board member will refuse to surrender his or her independent judgments to special interest or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or the gain of friends.
Thank you. Mr. Riddell, we're removing the minutes?
We're going to be administratively removing the minutes. Now that budget season is over, I can get back to doing my minutes as regularly scheduled. So that I'll take, we'll try to get to the March ones. We have to do the March 18th, and I'll try to get to the April ones for next month.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Alonso Pama?
Good evening. Last night and this morning were the class of 2025 Senior Recognition and Scholarship Awards. We would like to thank all the benefactors who generously contribute and make the event possible. A special thank you to all the board members who graciously attended to support the graduating class of 2025. It has been an extremely busy month at OBHS. Many of our AP students have completed their AP exams during the first two weeks of May. Our spring band and orchestra has a concert and Unified had their end of the year party. Today, the high school had a mental health fair in the courtyard during lunch. Our spring sports are finishing up their regular season in GMC tournament games with state playoffs starting for many sports next week. Volleyball just won the GMC championships an hour ago. Good luck to good luck to all our spring athletes as they finish up their seasons. Coming up at the high school, we have state testing this week for freshmen and juniors with senior activities taking place. The junior prom will be held this Thursday, May 22nd, and the senior prom will be Friday, May 30th, at the Ocean Place Resort in Long Branch. We will have our annual Battle of the Classes on Friday, June 6th. Graduation for the class of 2025 will be on Tuesday, May 23rd, at the PNC Arts Center. It's hard to believe that the school year is almost over. On behalf of the student body at Old Bridge High School, we would like to thank the Board of Education and Central Administration for all their support. We would like to thank Dr. Sasso and the Old Bridge High School administrative team for their leadership and making Old Bridge High School feel like a family. Thank you for creating an environment that makes every student feel important and cared for. We would like to thank all the teachers, coaches, and advisors for preparing us with the knowledge and skills and tools to be successful and as productive citizens in our future. Mr. Sidedino, thank you for your many years of service as superintendent. We appreciate all the love and support you've offered the students of Old Bridge. On behalf of all the students at Old Bridge, we say thank you and wish you the best in your future. It's been an honor to be able to give the student report, and I want to thank all the Board of Education members for making me feel comfortable and welcome every month. I am truly grateful to have grown up in our town and privileged to be graduating with the class of 2025. Thank you.
Great job, great job.
Congratulations.
Okay, under recognition, move the board.
Wait, 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 hold on, hold on, hold on. Thank you for all your hard work and dedication and sitting through us at the board meetings. We're going to, before we do recognition, we're going to move up the superintendent's report.
Thank you. It's an honor to share the microphone with you, Joseph. So tonight is one of my favorite meetings that we will ever have over the course of a school year, and we see a full house like this. Sometimes it's not for good things. Sometimes there's some public discord and, you know, concern about something going on in the school district. But tonight, it's something special. Tonight, it is the honor of recognizing the great support staff and the great educators who are in our schools every day, giving so much of their own time, commitment, and dedication that takes so much away from their own personal families to give what is the best educational product to the outcome. Our 12th graders, by the time they leave, and you see what a fine job you are doing when you have students like Joseph so eloquently speaking to a summary of what's going on in the high school. You've done that. You've become part of that legacy. And tonight is an award ceremony that I always say is better than the Oscars, better than the Tonys, better than the Emmys, and similar to the Screen Actors Guild Award because it starts with being recognized by your peers. Your peers in a crowded craft of people who are excellent professionals in what they do. And who better to know how amazing each of you are than those people who are professionals in that craft? And I want to thank our instructional council, led by Rachel O'Neil and Anita Keeler, for their hard work with the entire instructional council to put this program together tonight. It is very painstaking, and a lot of information goes into getting that. But something the instructional council has done a few years ago was then open up the selection process for the Teacher of the Year and ESP of the Year to the public, to the parents, to the families, to the students. And I think that's even made it even a greater process and more inclusive. So tonight, we're going to turn it over to that group in just in a few minutes. But there's something that's even more satisfying as a superintendent of schools is when a community comes together to support those educated professionals in those classrooms. And that is something that our education foundation has begun to do over the past few years. They've brought it back, and they award grants every year. And tonight, we start with the awarding of grants from our ed foundation to those educators who are working tirelessly in the classroom every day. So at this point, before we go into the Teacher of the Year, ESP of the Year, selection and recognition, can I have the members of the ed foundation go to the dais and announce the grant recipients for the 2025-26 school year?
Thank you. Ms. Mazone, can you do the ethics corner, please?
The board member will refuse to surrender his or her independent judgments to special interest or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or the gain of friends.
Thank you. Mr. Riddell, we're removing the minutes?
We're going to be administratively removing the minutes. Now that budget season is over, I can get back to doing my minutes as regularly scheduled. So that I'll take, we'll try to get to the March ones. We have to do the March 18th, and I'll try to get to the April ones for next month.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Alonso Pama?
Good evening. Last night and this morning were the class of 2025 Senior Recognition and Scholarship Awards. We would like to thank all the benefactors who generously contribute and make the event possible. A special thank you to all the board members who graciously attended to support the graduating class of 2025. It has been an extremely busy month at OBHS. Many of our AP students have completed their AP exams during the first two weeks of May. Our spring band and orchestra has a concert and Unified had their end of the year party. Today, the high school had a mental health fair in the courtyard during lunch. Our spring sports are finishing up their regular season in GMC tournament games with state playoffs starting for many sports next week. Volleyball just won the GMC championships an hour ago. Good luck to good luck to all our spring athletes as they finish up their seasons. Coming up at the high school, we have state testing this week for freshmen and juniors with senior activities taking place. The junior prom will be held this Thursday, May 22nd, and the senior prom will be Friday, May 30th, at the Ocean Place Resort in Long Branch. We will have our annual Battle of the Classes on Friday, June 6th. Graduation for the class of 2025 will be on Tuesday, May 23rd, at the PNC Arts Center. It's hard to believe that the school year is almost over. On behalf of the student body at Old Bridge High School, we would like to thank the Board of Education and Central Administration for all their support. We would like to thank Dr. Sasso and the Old Bridge High School administrative team for their leadership and making Old Bridge High School feel like a family. Thank you for creating an environment that makes every student feel important and cared for. We would like to thank all the teachers, coaches, and advisors for preparing us with the knowledge and skills and tools to be successful and as productive citizens in our future. Mr. Sidedino, thank you for your many years of service as superintendent. We appreciate all the love and support you've offered the students of Old Bridge. On behalf of all the students at Old Bridge, we say thank you and wish you the best in your future. It's been an honor to be able to give the student report, and I want to thank all the Board of Education members for making me feel comfortable and welcome every month. I am truly grateful to have grown up in our town and privileged to be graduating with the class of 2025. Thank you.
Great job, great job.
Congratulations.
Okay, under recognition, move the board.
Wait, 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 hold on, hold on, hold on. Thank you for all your hard work and dedication and sitting through us at the board meetings. We're going to, before we do recognition, we're going to move up the superintendent's report.
Thank you. It's an honor to share the microphone with you, Joseph. So tonight is one of my favorite meetings that we will ever have over the course of a school year, and we see a full house like this. Sometimes it's not for good things. Sometimes there's some public discord and, you know, concern about something going on in the school district. But tonight, it's something special. Tonight, it is the honor of recognizing the great support staff and the great educators who are in our schools every day, giving so much of their own time, commitment, and dedication that takes so much away from their own personal families to give what is the best educational product to the outcome. Our 12th graders, by the time they leave, and you see what a fine job you are doing when you have students like Joseph so eloquently speaking to a summary of what's going on in the high school. You've done that. You've become part of that legacy. And tonight is an award ceremony that I always say is better than the Oscars, better than the Tonys, better than the Emmys, and similar to the Screen Actors Guild Award because it starts with being recognized by your peers. Your peers in a crowded craft of people who are excellent professionals in what they do. And who better to know how amazing each of you are than those people who are professionals in that craft? And I want to thank our instructional council, led by Rachel O'Neil and Anita Keeler, for their hard work with the entire instructional council to put this program together tonight. It is very painstaking, and a lot of information goes into getting that. But something the instructional council has done a few years ago was then open up the selection process for the Teacher of the Year and ESP of the Year to the public, to the parents, to the families, to the students. And I think that's even made it even a greater process and more inclusive. So tonight, we're going to turn it over to that group in just in a few minutes. But there's something that's even more satisfying as a superintendent of schools is when a community comes together to support those educated professionals in those classrooms. And that is something that our education foundation has begun to do over the past few years. They've brought it back, and they award grants every year. And tonight, we start with the awarding of grants from our ed foundation to those educators who are working tirelessly in the classroom every day. So at this point, before we go into the Teacher of the Year, ESP of the Year, selection and recognition, can I have the members of the ed foundation go to the dais and announce the grant recipients for the 2025-26 school year?
Thank you, Dave. Before we get started, I just wanted to thank the foundation board and its trustees, something that was mentioned last night during the scholarships. It's a lot of the behind the scenes that go on that people don't realize. You guys are seeing the finished product tonight. But a lot of work goes in to raise this money from the flea market that we did last week, the One Love t-shirts and hoodies that we sold, Casino Night, Lucky Charms. So we put a lot of work into it. I know I didn't get a free t-shirt out of it, so it's a lot of work goes in. None of us did, but got something out of it. And then more importantly, I also want to thank the people who make the contributions, the people who give money towards the foundation. And again, just to review, what the foundation does is we raise grant money to give back to teachers. It's a process. Grant applications come in, we review them as a board, trustees, and then we pick who's going to, not everybody can get, but we appreciate all the applications. Last year, we gave away about $10,000. And grant money this year, we're giving about $8,500 worth of grant money to our staff. So it's a great cause. So without any further ado, let's give some money away. We're going to announce the teacher, their project, and even how much they're going to get. And the school, and the school. And we'll take turns to share the wealth. All right, so the first grant is going to Allison Tuckman from the Old Bridge High School, $500 for a weather station. Allison.
First one. Next grant goes to, is from OBHS, $1,000 for sewing machines for Gillian Conti.
The next grant goes to Susan Nazeth of the Old Bridge High School, $744.95 for a cricket machine. Susan. Congratulations.
Okay, next is Colleen Kenny and Clarissa Morabau from Grissom School, $1,000 for adventuring across America.
The next grant goes to Maureen McKeeran from McDivitt School, $661 for unity in the community.
Okay, next is Sarah Monahan and Natasha Rivera and Taryn Robertson from Sandberg School, $858.32 for science experiments.
The next grant goes to Kathleen Donovan and Megan Linnell from McDivitt School, $927 for novels.
Next grant goes to Amanda Jenks, Sharaw School, $800 Outdoor Sensory Initiative, Sensory Path Initiative.
The next grant goes to Kimberly Mascarello from Sandberg, $1,000 music, technology, and tools.
Okay, and last, but not least, Stephanie Nunn, Southwood School, $940.03 for departmentalized math and science.
Thank you. And just before we cut, another farewell and thank you to Dave Sidedino, who's on our board as well. Just yet another feather in your cap, Dave, of something that you did on your free time. But thanks again, Dave. Thanks for your efforts on the board for the foundation. Thanks for your efforts on the board for the foundation. And thank you, everybody else, for coming. Thanks for your donations, and keep the money coming in. Thank you.
So can I have a motion for the recognition?
Ms. O'Motion. Francisco will second.
Matt, would you like to do the retirements?
Yes. Okay, move the board, approve the retirement. It's on. I guess it's not loud enough. Is it loud enough now? Yes, it is. Move the board, approve the retirement of the following staff members with deep appreciation for their many years of dedicated service to the district. Jennifer Weislis, and with Carl Sandberg Middle School ELA, 26 years, and Kathleen Kennedy, Administration Executive Secretary, 25 years, with a total of 51 years. The board wishes you a great retirement and thank you for your service.
Before we go down, to start the Teacher of the Year presentation, some of the board members wanted to say something.
I'll go first. First off, I would like to congratulate all of our teachers and ESPs on this amazing and well-deserving award. I would especially like to congratulate Ms. Tranchina, Grissom's guidance counselor, who came into the school this year and captured all of the Gators' hearts on the first day. And thank you for personally helping my kids out daily. So congratulations. You guys all deserve it, and you guys make the schools what they are. So thank you.
Anyone else want to speak before we start?
Yes, I would like to congratulate all the teachers that are receiving the award tonight. You did a great job, and I thank you for being here for all our kids.
Same thing for me. Thank you so much. We really appreciate you and all you do, and we know your job is sometimes thankless, and it's a tireless job, but we really do, we know what goes into your jobs, and we really appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Rich.
So a lot of people in this room know that I'm married to a teacher, which is, you know, a very difficult task for me because she's always up and down, there's a lot of emotion, there's a lot of responsibilities, and quite frankly, people don't realize what teachers go through every day. It's a 365-day-a-year job. People think it's just 180 days, but it's not. You know, people forget about lesson plans, they forget about, you know, phone calls, emails, and things after hours because, as we know, during the day, you guys don't have the chance to do it. People think that you have some spare time in your day. It's not. You're filling in for people who may be out sick, you may lose a prep because there's not enough coverage, there's lunch coverage, and there's other things you need to do, child study teams, meetings. There's a lot of things that go into your day. And people don't realize that, you know, to be a teacher, you have to be a special person. And quite frankly, everyone in this room is a special person because you give up a lot of your time, a lot of your energy, your own money. And quite frankly, if it wasn't for the teachers in this room and all the educational staff that we have here, our school district wouldn't be where it is today. This is why we are a very high-excelling district. That's why people want to come to Old Bridge. It's not because of the Old Bridge Public Schools. It's about the people. It's about the teachers, it's about the staff, it's about the administration, the school board. Everyone plays a role. But without the teachers and the staff who make a difference in this district, we wouldn't be a district of high caliber. We're very pleased to have such wonderful people in this district. And again, I recognize it. I'm sure the board recognizes your abilities and who you are. So I just want to say, I want to congratulate all the Teachers of the Year and all the special support staffs who are being recognized this evening for a job well done, and this district is doing well because of you. Thank you.
So tonight, we celebrate you, the art of our schools, your passion, dedication, and tireless efforts shape our students' minds and futures. From inspiring lessons to behind-the-scenes support, you make learning possible and our community stronger. Thank you for your unwavering commitment and for being the heroes of Old Bridge. Thank you.
I would like to congratulate all of the teachers and education service professionals that we are celebrating tonight. You should all be so very proud of your accomplishments as educators. Our students are beyond lucky to have you guiding them through their learning. While all of our teachers here tonight are shining stars, there's one or two in particular that I would like to say a few words about. Mrs. Ranner, you are a special soul. Only one of my daughters had the privilege of having you as their teacher. However, there are two people in my house, my younger one, who had the honor of actually being in your class, and that other person is me. I was present in your classroom, or my dining room, for the majority of the 2020-2021 school year. You handled one of life's biggest challenges with grace, compassion, and a ton of patience. There's no one like you. Thank you for all you have done for Olivia and all the children that you have served. Thank you. Also, I would like to thank Mrs. Wakem. My older daughter had the privilege of being in Mrs. Wakem's class and has always spoken so highly of you. Middle school is a whole other beast, so I admire you very much for taking all of that on, and I haven't had the opportunity to really get to know middle school teachers as much because teenagers kind of go and do their own thing. So I just wanted to say thank you, and thank you to all of you here tonight.
I tell my daughter every day, she leaves the door, you know, "Go change the world." You guys, you know, not only the 20 teachers being celebrated, teachers and staffs being celebrated tonight, but all of our staff. We're lucky to have all of you, and thank you for being, changing the world. On that point, I'm going to, as a board and as a stage, we're going to empty out and hand it over to Mr. Lewis to celebrate, to start.
Hello? Good evening. Good evening. Thank you. I like to be acknowledged. I'm a teacher. Well, good evening, and thank you for attending the Old Bridge Township Public Schools Teacher and Educational Service Professional Recognition Program. I am Anahita Keeler, and on behalf of the Instructional Council, I welcome you to our awards ceremony this evening. The Instructional Council is an advisory committee comprised of teachers, a paraprofessional, and central administration members. Our members this year include Rachel O'Neill, John Daly, Mike Metassa, Brittany Fuentes, Sally Fazio, Nancy Coghlan, Tim Goffred, Stacy Winters, Shana Rosenbaum, and Andrew Lewis. The Instructional Council oversees the teacher and ESP recognition program. Congratulations to everyone being recognized here tonight. Tonight, we gather to honor the outstanding achievements of our educators and support professionals in the district whose dedication and passion embody the spirit of One Love and who have made a significant impact on our students and community. Investment in people is the most important investment one can make. We can say as a community, it's not a book, it's not a program, it's not a computer that makes us significantly better as a school district. It's our investment in humans, how we treat our staff, how we engage our students, that makes for better learning opportunities. Now, that impactful insight, as much as I would like to take credit for it, I cannot. It comes from Mr. Sidedino, whose words remind us what really matters in education. He also stated that our students are going to perform better if they want to be in school and if they want to come here because they have trust and have built relationships with their teachers. Nothing is going to improve student performance better than teachers who care for their students and work hard to build those trusting relationships. Well, we couldn't agree more, Mr. Sidedino. So tonight's awards recognize the exceptional commitment of the individuals who go above and beyond, and go above and beyond to build those relationships, to create a positive learning environment for all, reflecting the unity and support that One Love represents. This year, we received a total of 399 nominations from across the district, highlighting and recognizing the dedication of Old Bridge teachers and staff. We'd like to share some of the quotes, I'll just read a few, from the nominations about the phenomenal staff in our district, which we have taken directly from colleagues, from parents, and from students. I won't do it in different voices, so bear with me. Children in the special education classes and general education classes just gravitate towards her because of her calm, funny, caring, and kind personality. He is more than just a person in a classroom. He is a mentor, a coach, and a leader. Her strength lies in her knowledge of the students she works with and her ability to effectively partner with the faculty members in her classroom. She knows exactly how to focus my son, grab his attention and interest in the topics they're discussing, and makes him feel great about himself. No matter how hard the day, her smile is still there to greet her students and make them feel better and so welcome. She is the backbone of our school. She has transformed my daughter's love for learning. She has been an invaluable partner in my child's education this year, and now a few from our students themselves. He relates to real-life situations and how you can, and how you can use what he is teaching to solve problems in the real world. She always makes me feel comfortable talking to her. He makes learning fun and always helps us understand even the hardest stuff. He motivates us to be better and do our best every single day. And finally, she became like a mother to me. The 19 individuals we celebrate this year embody the boundless dedication to the Old Bridge spirit of One Love that lifts their students, colleagues, and the Old Bridge community. They've provided an educational experience that motivates, encourages, and bolsters maximum student achievement. We'd like to thank the educators we honor here tonight for inspiring the children of Old Bridge and for your incessant dedication to our students and the Old Bridge community. I'd like to also further highlight something that we found in the Instructional Council to be really exciting, and that is that tonight, 14 recipients for Teacher or ESP of the Year are either community members from Old Bridge or former Old Bridge graduates, showcasing our community's strong ties to education. They come back home all the time. And as Mr. Sidedino stated, we are a district of the best, and tonight, we're honoring those who were selected as the best of the best, the creme de la creme. Tonight's recognition will include a PowerPoint spotlighting the 2025 Teachers of the Year and the four educational support professional recipients while we share some highlights about each recipient. We ask that all honorees please make your way to the center when we call your name to be celebrated. At this time, will our administration and our board members please join us in the first two rows right here in the auditorium? Are we good? Excellent. I can't see any of you, so wish me luck. Michael Perata, M. Scott Carpenter Elementary School. Come on down. Mr. Perata goes the extra mile every day, whether it's for the students or to help staff. He is always energetic and greets everyone in a positive manner throughout the day. Mr. Perata is always finding the teachable moments through humor and real-world examples. Justine Heredia, Leroy Gordon Cooper Elementary School. Mrs. Heredia's ability to foster an environment where children of all backgrounds and abilities can express themselves through art is remarkable. She has an extraordinary gift for transforming any space within the school, filling it with vibrant, student-created artwork that celebrates the diversity and creativity of the entire student body. Dr. Kimberly Costello, John Glenn Preschool. Dr. Costello possesses a genuine warmth that allows her to connect with both her fellow students and teachers on a personal level. Her patience and understanding have helped many students overcome challenges and achieve their goals. Jessica Tranchina, Virgil I. Grissom Elementary School. Mrs. Tranchina has brought a calmness to overwhelming situations, a perspective where one may feel clouded and an emotional feel of safety when one feels alone. She is compassionate, empathetic, and kind. She volunteers her time, is supportive, and shows her dedication to Grissom School. Alyssa Lenning, Madison Park Elementary School. Mrs. Lenning, Ms. Lenning has established a strong rapport with her students characterized by her kindness and patience. This has earned her the admiration and respect of her students, who respond positively to their, to her guidance. Both staff and students recognize that they can rely on Ms. Lenning for support and collaboration. Thank you for waiting. Jaclyn Pepe, James A. McDivitt Elementary School. Mrs. Pepe goes above and beyond on a daily basis. She takes time every week to provide families with snapshots and previews of the learning that will be happening in the classroom. She has created a learning environment that is not only fun, but is also filled with lots of learning. Mariana Dennis, Memorial Elementary School. Ms. Dennis consistently goes above and beyond to create a classroom environment where students feel supported, inspired, and challenged to reach their full potential. She's an educator who truly embodies the spirit of what it means to be a dedicated, passionate, and impactful teacher. Jessica Bomea, William A. Miller Elementary School. Ms. Bomea exemplifies the best qualities of an educator through her unwavering commitment to fostering meaningful relationships with students, parents, and staff at Miller School. She takes the time to understand each child's unique needs, learning styles, and interests, ensuring every student feels seen and heard. ensuring every student feels seen and heard. I can't see. Helena Ranner, Walter M. Sharah Elementary School. In her classroom, Mrs. Ranner fosters a nurturing learning environment, offering additional support to students who may be facing challenges. She maintains strong relationships with her students, parents, ensuring open lines of Linda Naspo, Allen B. Shepherd Elementary School. Mrs. Naspo is an absolute joy to work with. She is such a positive person. Her students absolutely love her and are excited to work with her daily. She's a wonderful advocate for her multilingual students. Justine Heredia, Southwood Elementary School. Mrs. Heredia is an amazing artist and educator. She is kind, always generous, and is always willing to help her colleagues with art projects they may need assistance with. She possesses so many amazing qualities and is always a team player. She provides positive praise to all her students and encourages them to enjoy art in her class. Kristin Apuzzo, Voorhees Elementary School. Ms. Apuzzo is not only an amazing teacher and colleague, but a huge asset to our Special Education Department. I have witnessed firsthand the extraordinary commitment, skill, and passion she brings to the classroom every day. Ms. Apuzzo has consistently gone above and beyond in fostering an inclusive, supportive, and empowering environment for students with diverse learning needs. Gina Simon, Jonas Salk Middle School. Mrs. Simon is energetic, enthusiastic, passionate about teaching, and wants her students to be as excited as she is. Mrs. Simon finds a way to connect with each of her students. She goes out of her way to find a commonality with them so she can reach each of them. Valerie Wakem, Carl Sandberg Middle School. Mrs. Wakem has a great connection with students and teachers and always helps them with their needs. She helps everyone in the school community be a better person. We are truly grateful and appreciative of Mrs. Wakem's tireless efforts in bringing the best out of her young scholars. Kimberly Hopping, Ellen McDermott Grade Nine Center. Mrs. Hopping brightens the day of all her students and makes sure that no one feels alone. She gives up hundreds of hours of her time away from her husband and children to help her students coach the varsity girls' soccer team and be an awesome friend. Nicole Mandano, Old Bridge High School. Mrs. Mandano is not just her students' teacher, but their cheerleader, shoulder-to-cry-on, supporter, guidance, voice of reason, and motivator, who strives to make sure she supports students both in and outside the classroom by helping them find their home at school. She goes out of her way to create a safe space through her themed classroom filled with positive affirmations, bright colors, and places to practice mindfulness or de-stressing stations. Her classroom kitchen table exemplifies how she creates an environment where students feel welcome and supported. Jennifer Ramos, Elementary Educational Support Professional. Mrs. Ramos takes great pride in knowing each of her two hundred and seventy-nine students by name, ensuring that every child feels recognized and valued. Whether it's volunteering to solve problems or lending a hand with daily tasks, she's always eager to help make the school environment more efficient and positive. Zonia Stetson, Elementary Educational Support Professional. Mrs. Stetson is one of the most hard-working individuals I have ever met and is a wonderful para-professional. She truly cares for the students she works with and goes above and beyond on a daily Narupa Patel, Secondary Educational Services Professional. Mrs. Patel approaches situations with kindness, sensitivity, a polite demeanor, thorough communication, and unwavering focus. Her actions exemplify what it means to be compassionate and dedicated. Last but not the least, Connie Shamas, District Educational Services Professional. Mrs. Shamas is a very energetic and dedicated employee. She works with staff and administration for various assignments. She is always learning and always working on a new project, all with a beautiful smile on her face. Her bubbly personality puts staff at ease whenever they have an inquiry. We do have one more special recognition to share. It's unusual, however, needed. This year, Kelly Education selected Jordan Solomon from Sharah Elementary School as the, as the National Para-educator of the Year. Jordan has been instrumental in helping to educate the students in her classroom. In her role, she has instructed individual students, taught small groups, managed behaviors, and followed through with behavior interventions. As a result of her strong relationships, children have become actively engaged in the learning process and self-motivated learners. Thank you to Steve Kudjuski, Susan Walsh, the Students in the TV Production Program for facilitating this production, this presentation. Thank you to Adrian Klein and the Photography Students as well. We want to thank each and every one of you, the building administrators, for their support throughout the Teacher of the Year process as well. Ladies and gentlemen, let's have one last round of applause for your teacher and ESP Thank you to everyone. You may now join your families in celebrating, and the board may make its way back up to the stage.
Roll call, please.
Congratulations to all the recipients.
Roll call, please.
Okay. Done. Absolutely, positively yes. Francisco.
Uh, what am I?
Recognition.
Yes.
Yes for Francisco. Giordano.
Yes.
Joedrin.
With great pride, yes.
Mazone.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Solakowski.
Yes for our everyday heroes, our teachers. Thank you.
Venka Tason.
Yes.
Dan Toono.
Congratulations to all, absolutely yes.
Resolutions one, two, and three for recognition passes.
Perfect. Any special committee reports?
I have one. Fire away. Okay, on May fourteenth, we had a policy curriculum meeting. It was actually action-packed, a lot of information. Some of the takeaways that I had from it, for the policy meeting, we had Dan Domeno discuss our new spectator policy that's going to effect. That's gonna be, and we'll be voting, we're gonna have the first reading tonight, actually. Policy ninety-one sixty-three, which basically surrounds the attendance to football games and the behavior at the games. It's pretty much gonna be a four-strike rule. First offense, two home game suspensions, second offense, a four-home game suspension, third offense suspended for the remainder of the season, fourth offense, an indefinite suspension. So we've had a few instances, especially at the football games. So a policy actually is now gonna be enforced through the NJSIAA. So that pretty much stood out. We have some policy updates, again, we're having a first reading. Some of the standouts was public participation. We're looking to lower that to three minutes at the podium instead of the current five minutes. It's on the, on the block. We had Mr. Yanazelli discuss artificial intelligence, the good, the bad, and the ugly of it. You know, the good use we can get out of it, plus the monitoring and the supervision of AI being used, you know, for, I guess, glorified Cliff Notes for when I went to school. So that was discussed. Under curriculum, Mr. Yanazelli was there as well, discussing the use of our devices. Obviously, under the budget situation, they do have the ability to clean up and reuse the devices that we currently have. They've gotta be updated. I think they're on, it could be quoted, Windows ten. And so they're actually physically cleaning the devices and updating the software for that. We also had Ms. Stacy Winters, Supervisor of Mathematics, and Cheryl Bakuta, the math coach, discussing the elementary math pilot. And Visions is coming to an end, or the end of our ten-year contract, which is in two thousand sixteen. And Mr. Tooie, jump in whenever you think I need some correction. The pilot program, they're gonna be taking volunteers for upcoming software that I'm gonna be using for the math program. And then finally, which was also a plot out, was, and we're gonna be discussing this tonight as well, due to the feedback that we got about summer school, we're actually consolidating the summer program into one school. We currently had them at both middle schools, Sandberg and Salk, and now that's gonna be consolidated to just Sandberg, saving the district about twenty-four thousand dollars. In addition, we're gonna be discussing parents, I guess, supporting a portion of the, of the summer school program. So some of the ownership going on, onto the parents, which have, should have a multiple purpose of motivating parents, motivating their children, if they've gotta, you know, chip in towards summer school, maybe an extra set of eyes. And that's on the agenda as well tonight. Did I miss anything? And I think that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
Yes, I have one. On April thirtieth, we had a CPAG meeting, the Olbridge Special Education Parent Advisory Group. And I'll just go through a summary of what we talked about. The presentation was on funding, finance, and budgets. And first, we discussed nationally the impact on student outcomes, budget scrutiny, spending trends nationally, this is all still nationally, and recommendations for improving special education. There were some really great resources, and there's, the presentation is on the website, and there's a couple of QR codes on there. You can also go to the CPAG Facebook page, and all the, all the resources are there as well. Then we talked about what is happening in New Jersey, special education programs and things like that. Again, all this information is on the website. And then we broke it down to what's happening in Olbridge, and she gave a link to New Jersey School Performance Reports, local special education profiles. There was a really great link for a special education placement dashboard, and the, she also included the Olbridge Strategic Plan. What can the BOE do? And she gave some suggestions for things that the BOE can do. But it was a great meeting. I really encourage you to go to their website and look at all the different links that she gave, because there's so much information on there. And if you have any questions, they always would like to hear from you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Hearing of the resident on any agenda item.
Andrew Lewis, OBEA. I really wasn't going to speak tonight until I looked at the agenda. Tonight, I want to express my deep frustration and disappointment, not only with the content of the policy under consideration, but with how it's been handled and what it signals about transparency, equity, and public voice. Policy one sixty-seven deals with public participation at board meetings. The first reading of this policy was not made publicly available on the website until I personally requested a copy this morning. That alone raises red flags. How are members of the public supposed to engage meaningfully in the process if we don't even know what's being discussed? Access to proposed policy changes should be automatic, not something that we have to chase down. And now, in this moment, complex budget decisions, the search for a new superintendent, and entering into what assured would be emotionally and entering into what assured to be emotionally charged discussions about consolidation and redistricting. You're considering a policy that would limit the time that the public has to speak at these meetings. This is not the time to limit voices. This is the time to invite them in. This is the time for more transparency, not less. More openness, not restrictions. Board members regularly take the microphone multiple times a night, at length, and with prepared remarks. And I absolutely respect your right to do so. But why should that right stop at the edge of the stage? Why should those of us in attendance, parents, staff, students, community members, be told to make it quicker? You tell us you want participation, you say you want to hear from the stakeholders, but then you consider a policy like this. A policy that contradicts your message. Participation isn't just a talking point, it's a cornerstone of public education and democracy. If you truly value the voices of our community, don't just say it, show it. So I'm urging you not to silence the very people that you claim to serve. Don't shrink the space for public input right when we might need it the most. Reverse course on this policy, and instead encourage dialogue and actually live up to the values that you profess. Because in the end, your credibility isn't measured by how many times you speak from the dais, it's measured by how well you listen.
Any other residents? Okay, we're gonna oppose the mic. Policy, the first reading is here. No, no moving on that. Curriculum, professional development. Can I have a motion for items one through 10, please?
Giordano, motion.
Mazone will second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I just wanted to, we're talking about one through nine, correct?
Ten.
Ten is added on the back.
Right. Did I leave anything out, Jim, with the consolidation of the schools?
Nope, it was 24,400 some odd dollars was the savings for this year. By having consolidated some of the teachers and reviewing the costs from last year, we felt we could do it in one location. And it also consolidates on the nurse, because we use the ESY nurse at Sandberg where the ESY program is, so.
And I also just wanna bring to the public and parents' awareness that, starting summer of 2026, if your student has to go to summer school, there will be a tuition payment of $250. So there wasn't, you know, there's no charge this year because we're consolidating and there's a savings to the district. But when we're looking at finances and trying to stretch our dollar further, the summer school, starting 2026, will have a tuition payment. So that's something to keep in mind for this coming school year. Any other discussion?
Madam President, I just had a sidebar conversation with Dr. Hoager. As we know, Title I is a big part of our summer program. So I just learned that Title I may not be in place because of the cut of federal funds. So, you know, there's two avenues that summer programs took, right? It took the Title I programs, which helped our children who needed additional help from underprolurged communities and areas within Old Bridge. And then we had summer school. So we need to make this very clear where we're at, because it's not clear. Because I was even confused when we're talking about summer school monies and no Title I possibility this year. So could we have some more elaboration on that, so people understand where we're at with Title I summer programs and summer school?
So there's three programs that, in the past, have run in Old Bridge. A couple years ago, there was four. So we had, when we received federal funds for ESAR, there was an ESAR program, a Title I program, the middle school summer recovery program for students who had issues with absenteeism and/or poor grades, and ESY. So this year, or, excuse me, last year, we had the Title I summer, middle school summer school program, ESY. This upcoming year, due to an anticipated 20% decrease in our federal funds through Title I, which is anticipated from what Mr. Whitehead has been told by his fellow BAs in the county and the state, the summer school program is, as of right now, not going to run. The, for the Title I. So the, now the Title I schools, I believe it's Cooper, was that Memorial and Shepherd is where the Title I programs were being held? So the Title I students were included in that. If there is a change and the funds do materialize as part of a reallocation by the federal government, then the before and after-school programs could be extended through the school year. And that would allow for the funds to be expended in an appropriate amount of time and providing the students with support.
Mr. Tuie, do we know how much that costs for Title I summer school?
It depends on, on the students and the amount of staff that are hired. I don't have the number off the top of my head, but we can get that for you.
Please, because, you know, we need to ensure that the children who need the extra help, obviously, Title I is very important to our kids in the summer school. Some, some students need that additional learning to help them go into the new school year. So I know that monies are being cut, but let the board be educated. If it's $100,000, if it's $70,000 or $50,000, we should know what that price is. Because, you know what, if we're losing that funds, but you know what, that program is very meaningful for those schools and those students, maybe we can find a way to try to make it happen at maybe a reduced direction? I don't know. So that's why I wanna know how much the programs cost, so the board can evaluate and determine if that's something we wanna fund.
One of the issues is when we get the allocations, you know, we don't get them, it's almost June now. And outside of the state of New Jersey, the only slower department is the federal government. So at this point, we don't have an allocation. We don't have allocations for Title I, we don't have allocations for IDEA. Our IDEA funds were cut last year. I do anticipate a cut in IDEA funds this year, which is gonna have an overall impact on our budget. So I think it's in, you know, and when we get those funds, we make an educated decision on how we can best educate the kids. If we can run a summer school program, we certainly will. But I can get you those numbers, so you have those, and I'll provide them to the board in terms of the overall cost for the Title I program, anticipated for what it would be from last year.
When is the anticipated notification, if we're getting funds or not, or are they gonna stay silent like the state of New Jersey is staying silent?
I don't work for the federal government, Mr. Dunn. I don't know. I can't tell you that answer.
This historicals, you know, when we get notified, so is there?
It's usually June, June, July.
And that becomes the issue, to be able to staff the programs. We don't know what the cut is, we don't know how much money we'll have, and we can't hire and staff and run a program if we don't know what we have. And it's frustrating to us as well. But looking at other avenues, how do we service the students would be potentially, once we do know what our funding is, is to extend those programs that run during the school year.
We were told to budget at least a 75% of prior year allocation, so essentially 25% less than, than previous year. But again, the allocation, it, it comes from the federal government to the state and then to us. So we weigh on the state to get that allocation to us. But usually, it's sometime in June, which is behind the April already.
And I believe it's usually run for four weeks? Is that the, the Title I program usually runs for four weeks? And if we had to cut and run it for two weeks, weighing the option of, do we, and again, we can't staff it because we don't know what we have, would it be more productive to extend the programs during the year than, rather than do two weeks over the summer without the proper information in a timely fashion?
If we can get the dollar amount that it costs, so that the board can have the information and discuss it with the administration to see if that's something we may wanna do or not. You know, I'm just saying that, you know, we can consider it if it's not a lot of money, but that's something which, once we get those numbers, we can determine.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Sorry, I missed anything. Giordano?
Yes.
Joe Dring?
Yes.
Mazone?
Yes, to all except number eight.
Are you voting no on number eight? Or abstaining? Voting no or abstaining on number eight?
No.
Okay. Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Venkatesan?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Francisco?
Yes.
Dan Toono?
Yes.
Resolutions one through 10 for curriculum and professional development passes.
I apologize, I should have asked the board, is there any discussion on the policy part of the agenda? The first readings of the policy? Okay, sorry. Finance, we have items one through 16. Can I have a motion, please?
Dunn will make a motion, Madam President. Finance, one through 16.
Mazone will second.
Any discussion on finance, items one through 16? Okay, roll call, please.
Joe Dring?
Yes.
Mazone?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Venkatesan?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Dan Toono?
Yes.
Resolutions one through 16 for finance passes.
We don't have anything on athletics tonight. Non-certificated personnel office, items one and two. Can I have a motion, please?
Francisco will move.
Joe Dring will second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Venkatesan?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Joe Dring?
Yes.
Mazone?
Yes.
Dan Toono?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two for non-certified personnel office passes.
Non-certificated personnel operational, items one, two, and three. Can I have a motion, please?
Mazone, a motion.
Second?
Francisco will second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Venkatesan?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Joe Dring?
Yes.
Mazone?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Dan Toono?
Yes.
Resolutions one, two, and three for non-certified personnel operational passes.
Non-certificated personnel other, items one through five. Can I have a motion, please?
Francisco will move.
Joe Dring will second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Venkatesan?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Joe Dring?
Yes.
Mazone?
Yes.
Slade? Solakowski?
Yes.
Dan Toono?
Yes.
Resolutions one through five for non-certified personnel other passes.
Certificated personnels, we have items one through 29. Can I have a motion, please?
Joe Dring will move it.
Mazone will second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Joe Dring?
Yes.
Mazone?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Venkatesan?
Yes.
Dan Toono?
Yes.
Resolutions one through 29 for certified personnel passes.
Non-certificated personnel transportation, items one through eight. Can I have a motion, please?
Mazone, a motion.
Dunn will second, Madam President.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Joe Dring?
Yes.
Mazone?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Venkatesan?
Yes.
Dan Toono?
Yes.
Resolutions one through eight for non-certified personnel transportation carries.
Transportation, items one and two. Can I have a motion, please?
Dunn will make a motion, transportation, items one and two, Madam President.
Francisco will second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Joe Dring?
Yes.
Mazone?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Venkatesan?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dan Toono?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two for transportation carries.
Supplies, equipment, and services, items one through five. Can I have a motion, please?
Mazone, a motion.
Dunn will second that motion, Madam President.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Giordano?
Yes.
Joe Dring?
Yes.
Mazone?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Venkatesan?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Francisco?
Yes.
Dan Toono?
Yes.
Resolutions one through five for supplies, equipment, and services passes.
Miscellaneous, items one through 11. Can I have a motion, please?
Francisco will move, Mazone will second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Joe Dring?
Yes.
Mazone?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Venkatesan?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Dan Toono?
Yes.
Resolutions one through 11 for miscellaneous passes.
Any board business or board secretary?
No, I do just have an update. As you all know, or those who have been following, we have not received any official word from the state yet in regards to our budget, as far as the letter. We have been advised that we can expect a letter perhaps by June and to carry on our budget as it was adopted. We have submitted all the budget through statutory deadlines. We have certified our A4F, which is essentially our, our tax impact, and sent it to the, the Board of Taxation in the county. So we are operating as though we would have approved our entire budget, and this, even though it is still pending, the state has not received, or has not gave us a letter for approval or denial yet, but to expect one potentially in early June. So, once I hear an update, I will provide further update. Thank you.
Mr. Whitehead? I just wanted to make a comment on that. What happens the second week of June that just accentuates this whole thing as a political stunt?
Well, it's, it's elections, but...
That's correct. So the state of New Jersey is playing this game with us, and with other, other school boards who are waiting to hear about their funding. It's a game, and I hope this board recognizes it, because if we get noticed after June 10th, that tells you everything we need to know as a public, what the state of New Jersey is playing here.
But to your point, Rich, what as a board choice do we have? We couldn't not approve our budget.
No, no, I agree, Madam President. I'm just making a statement because the board, you know, we're at the mercy of the state of New Jersey and with political points.
But you're asking us to realize, and, like, we, we have action, like, we can do something. We can't do anything, you know, we're at Trenton's...
Listen, we understand that, but we need to make the public aware of the games that Trenton's playing. The public, the voters are the ones that elect these cronies and these, these people into office. And, you know, they're the ones that are making the policies, that are making our job more difficult, and they're using our children as pawns. And it's just frustrating that this is occurring. It happened during COVID as well. We've had these conversations. And that, you know, we are elected by our community, and we should have the statutory responsibility to do what we feel is right. So we're always in the middle here. So I just wanted to make that comment, because it seems like the state of New Jersey always leaves the school boards on alert because of the games they play. So I just wanted to make that known.
That part I get, but when you were saying, like, you know, the board, it made it sound like we could do something about it, so.
No, we can't, but we could, we can, we can make a unified statement saying that, you know, this game that the state's playing is unfair. But obviously, you know, that's something which we'll have to deliberate to discuss. But it was just a point, because it seems like everything is politically motivated based upon dates and times. It was just a comment. I just wanted to make sure the public understood that. Thank you, Madam President.
Agreed. Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
I have a question, Mr. Whitehead. So the state tells you to continue as if the budget was, the, the budget was passed. Now, what if we do that and the budget's not passed? Then what happens?
Well, the, the budget has passed, but I believe the only thing that would be left is certain lines within our budget might not be approved. I get the sense that we would use that funding, and you can just turn it into a different, again, that's the guidance I don't necessarily have, but we have been told to operate as though the budget was, was approved. So, you know, as of next week, you can really start doing your orders, or even people want, you start doing your orders for next week, or next year already. So that's really what school districts have been operating on, because those orders have to get out, you know, as soon as possible to get in for over the summer, so.
So, hearing of the residents on any district item? Anyone? Last, oh. We have somebody.
Hi, do I have to sign it?
There's nothing to sign. No? I got a freebie, okay.
It's probably right there.
Brooke Richards Patterson. I just wanted to say thank you for considering some of the things, you know, I know I sent like a long-winded couple of emails recently. I'm thrilled to just find out that we're at least making some, you know, headway in saving some money, such as consolidating the summer... I'm thrilled to just find out that we're at least making some, you know, headway in saving some money such as consolidating the summer school. I was curious just because it came up in conversation not too long ago. There used to be a night school for Old Bridge. Is that like a revenue maker or, you know, is that something to maybe consider to help us, you know, in the other direction make any money? And that's really it. I just also wanted to thank again Dr. Tui because I noticed, I just, I didn't, with the mob of people in here, I couldn't find the meeting minutes for tonight. So I was looking on the website and I noticed the curriculum meeting right on the district website as soon as you open it up. So I'm thrilled to see that there's committee meeting minutes now on the district website because I know I couldn't make it and I want to know what happened. And, you know, a lot of us feel that way running around, so, thank you.
To your question about the night school, we used to have what we call, we used to open it up to the public where people would volunteer and set up a course in the evening time. And they would get participants to come in from the community. I don't know if they, I don't know, do we have that anymore?
I don't think they volunteered.
No, no, we didn't volunteer. I got paid when I did it.
Oh, well, you said volunteered.
No, no.
They got paid.
I got paid, yes.
And there was a principal of the night school.
Right. Do they run this anymore?
Yeah.
No?
All right, hold on, let me...
Okay.
Do one, anyone else? All right, we're going to close the public portion. And I know we did talk about the, in the long-term strategic planning, part of it was possibly bringing back the adult high school and things like that as a revenue. That's been part of the long-term planning meetings. All right. Any other comments you want to make?
No, just to finish on Mr. Solakowski's comment. Yes, the district did run one out of the Brown Town School. I think, I don't know if you were on the board when the board sold that property to the fire department. And so that was an opportunity where that... The difference was that they didn't charge anything for anyone to attend that school, although they did pay staff to do that. So it wasn't a moneymaker at that time. And you had actually New Jersey residents coming to it and getting a diploma from Old Bridge High School. People were coming from as far as Bergen County and not paying any tuition for it. So, I know my administration in past years has made proposals to bring back a version of the night school using some of the same online platforms that we have here, but there wasn't support for it. So maybe in the future, the board could do that and bring it back as a source of revenue.
We had quite a few people running courses. I taught that for about two or three years. This was back twenty, twenty-five years ago. And we must have had thirty... We did it right at the high school here. So people would write up a curriculum, it would be approved, and they would come and teach it, and we would wind up... I don't know what they were paying tuition, but we were making money on it back then. Hopefully, we can bring it back. We'll see.
Okay. Any old business? Any new business?
I have... Go ahead, Marshall.
I guess mine's old. Do you want me to go?
Should we just go down the line and do old and new together? Is that easier for everybody?
As long as you just state for the record, old or new.
Okay. All right. We started that way last time, so let's start this way. Kieran, any old business first and then...
Sure. This probably is old and new. Okay. This is about long-range planning.
David needs to know one or the other.
Got it. So this is about long-range planning, maybe new. Good, you know, we chose the vendor through which, you know, we want to establish this planning. I think there was an email about when to schedule the next follow-up on this, Mr. Widel. I suggested that I prefer to have this early in June with the intent that we meet with that vendor. I would like to see some kind of a project plan because this is very critical for this district, for all of us here. I would like to really be very close to it. We could even have one of you, I want to volunteer. I want to really be very, very close to this, right? I want to really look at, you know, what's the project plan? What is the activities they're planning to do? Given summer is out and staff and, you know, we are not going to be here. So we want to see what we can do in the month of June until the school ends and then what is in store for the remaining months. Come September, we're expecting this plan to be ready. See, I don't know if, you know, the vendor will be allowed to go inspect the schools when the school is closed. So these are some things running in my head because we are having a commitment here to end this in four, five months, the whole planning. The report will be published in four, five months. So I want to see, you know, how we can accelerate this and make sure we are on time to deliver that report. That's the commitment we are giving to the public. And then we will have October, November, December to really plan all of us, what we want to do, how to re-district or whatsoever. So these are some thoughts I have, and I think we need to really actively work on this. And there is one more, maybe new business. I think I sent a note to Mr. Widel and Mr. Sidino. Old Bridge Soccer Club is, you know, one of the sport, you know, groups that are really, very successful. I see a lot of, you know, students participating. So I would want to really appreciate, you know, all the efforts put in, you know, by Mr. Nazim and others from the Old Bridge Soccer Club. As part of that, they're also changing their jerseys. So they offered to donate or give away, they have about four hundred jerseys, which, you know, we could leverage to use for our field days or for any other activities within our school system. So that's another topic I just want to share broadly here. That's about it. Thank you.
I'll just speak to that because it's a very generous offer from the Old Bridge Soccer Club. So one of the things I would do is maybe take that information when you say for field days, put that in touch with the PTAs, the schools, you know. I know they like to have school shirts that say the school name on it or something like that. If the jersey from the Old Bridge Soccer Club, I haven't seen it yet, if it has any advertising on it, which a lot of, okay, so there's no like, you know... Okay, then... It would have to be like, and Old Bridge Soccer Club is a nonprofit, though, so that would be fine. It just can't be like a, if they're receiving funds from, let's say, a sponsor, we can't have, we can't give them out in that way. So just if you have them send us a sample and we'll put it out to the PTAs and see where we go from there. Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Sidino.
Just if I could comment and for the record for the board, we had at the last long-term strategic planning meeting, at the very end of the meeting, it was discussed, and I know June can be tough. But there was a proposed date for a long-term planning of Wednesday, June eighteenth was the meeting that was proposed for that, I believe at six thirty. But it was Wednesday, June eighteenth, and that's what we were going on. It seems like Mr. Venkatesan has requested or tried to get that meeting closer up. I know that starts, you start looking into your calendars, all your color codings of all the activities coming up. But right now, it was slated for June eighteenth. I know a couple of members of the committee did confirm that if June eighteenth, if you want to do earlier than June eighteenth, I can look into some possible dates. But as of right now, we did have it slated for June eighteenth. I do have to advertise it, but please just confirm whether it's the whole board or just the committee if June eighteenth would work. I know a couple in the committee did agree and say that that date was available. So please do confirm other board members that want to attend.
Just to add to that, Mr. Widel, what I was looking for is more of the... Oh, sorry. Want to finish up?
They were just, yeah, they were just confirming it was a long-range strategic planning meeting.
Just to add to that, Mr. Widel, what I was more looking for is you plan to introduce them to us, right?
Correct, yeah.
So we don't have to wait for that one more month to get introduced and to discuss with them. Rather, as a small committee, we could meet with them and understand what is the plan here, right?
Understood. So I have a meeting set up with press on just with my architect and their team leader on it. Once I have that meeting, which is next week, I will then go over some dates. So if you guys want to, if just the long-term strategic planning committee, the four members want to reach out early June to get potentially their availability, I can set that up and then bring them to the whole board as well on June eighteenth as well. So I will, I will give you more information, I believe, next week, and then we'll get some dates from there.
Thanks, Mr. Widel.
No problem.
Yes, I would like to talk about the committees. Years ago, we had a video camera set up in our conference room. That disappeared. I don't know what happened. Then after a while, kids used to come in and videotape it and everything would be put on YouTube. So I proposed that we put a video camera back in our conference room. So when a committee has a meeting, all they have to do is press the button and it's videotaped. And then a week or two later, it'll be viewed on YouTube. I mean, it's an investment of a hundred fifty dollars or two hundred dollars. I mean, let's be transparent, a little more transparent for the public here. That all disappeared. I don't know how. So over the last twenty, twenty-five years that I've been on a board, the camera was installed twice and it disappeared twice. My proposal was to put a camera up in the conference room for a couple hundred dollars so all the committees could be recorded.
I agree with Mr. Solakowski, but I believe that, I guess, got cut short because of COVID, if I remember, because we were doing committee meetings up into COVID. And then all of a sudden, for two years, everything went out the window. So, but I agree with Mr. Solakowski that transparency is important and committee meetings are important because a lot of discussions are occurring there, which are very important. So, yeah, I would echo Mr. Solakowski's request.
I mean, it's difficult for a board member to cover whatever happened at a committee because some of the meetings are two hours long. If somebody wants a view, they can watch it on YouTube, okay?
I think that really benefits everybody, too, not only the public, but us as well. I mean, when we can't come to committee meetings, you know, I'm reading the minutes, but it'd be great to be able to just watch it back, so.
So if the board approves it, we'll put one up. Thank you.
Just a reminder that that is a board function. It's not administrative function. So if whoever was the board president at the time, if they stopped doing that practice, then that's when it stopped, so.
I understand, I understand. So let's get back to that routine so we can be a little more transparent with the community. Thank you.
I would also probably support adding a Zoom function to it, you know, if you want to have public participate as well, something to think about. I know one way is more easy to do, but two way it needs moderation. We don't know who's online and how to moderate that. But something I think as a board, I think we can think about it, how to expand that.
The technology is there. You can hang a camera up in the ceiling and it's going to cover everything. And I think that we may need a policy change if we're going to Zoom live committee meetings. But that's something which we can deliberate and discuss, but it's a very good idea, Mr. Solakowski. I think we had a lot of transparency back then, and if we move forward with that, then at least, you know, people understand what we're talking about in committee meetings, such as the policy change regarding public comment. So it would be good.
I think you were on a board when we taped a lot of them, am I right? Many years ago.
Yep.
I know. Thank you.
You can revise your policies and your bylaws to do that. You did use to do it for a long time, and it stopped with COVID. As of right now, you can't Zoom your board, your regular board meetings, but it is legal to do so. So that can be something the policy committee can get back into if that's the pleasure of the board.
I would just recommend that you don't make a quick decision on that and you think about, there's some positives to it, but there's also experiences we had as boards holding Zoom meetings when people from outside the country, outside the state, would enter our Zoom conferences and say very hateful things to the public using very uncolorful language and posting very uncolorful things. Not anybody particularly in the meeting, just it becomes, it becomes a target when you open up your public to the world and what you have to do. You can't just say only people from Old Bridge can attend the Zoom meeting. Once you make it a public meeting, you have to open up to the world, and then that world has very bad people out there whose only target is to want to bring chaos into situations. You can go online and watch hundreds of videos like that where it's happened, and that's why everyone stopped doing it.
Well, can we do something like what we do with these meetings? Like instead of it being a Zoom, they're like streamed onto whether it's YouTube or whatever.
So when you said like that's a board thing and I guess my next project, like what's the format? Like how does that work? Like...
So the committee, the committee, where the committee meetings ran was they were videotaped. And then within a few days, the TV studio would post them to the YouTube channel. That's fine. It's moderated, it's protected. It didn't have the opportunity for outside participants to come in and add voice to it. When you open something like a open-channel Zoom or any other that where anybody can log in, it creates a different level of a meeting in which it, you know, it could cause you litigation that things are stated about people and so forth within the community and public in meetings. So I just caution you to be careful. Don't just say, oh, that's great, let's do it. You know, there was a great line in Jurassic Park where they said they did it because they could and they never stopped to ask if they should.
Right.
And I guess to that point, like, I like the idea of giving more access to the public, but I think of some of the meetings that we've had, like the DEI meetings and things like that where some topics are more sensitive. I don't know if it would prevent some of the public from coming and speaking because they're worried about being on camera or saying something that they're experiencing and don't want, you know, everyone to know. Like, so I'm cautious about that part because I have been part of some meetings where people have talked about some sensitive experiences that they've had, and I don't know if they would be as comfortable doing that. I like the idea of giving the accessibility to the public, but I'm just cautious that part.
So, Madam President, we'll deliberate as a board with consultation from the administration to determine what the cost of action. I agree with Dave. You know, if we go to Zoom, you know, we don't want every Tom, Dick, and Harry out there being able to participate. However, there are parameters on Zoom where you can limit people from logging in and being involved. So the administrator can lock out, you know, the comment portion. You have to raise your hand and you have to be identified. So there are ways of doing it. So we as a board can deliberate with Dave's help or whomever on the administration to determine what we're going to do. But I think more transparency is important, but we need to also protect ourselves. So Dave brings up a lot of great points, so, but let's just deliberate and talk about it. Right. And what's different from what you're saying about a Zoom that you may take place and work, not everybody has the address to join in that. So when you're having an open public meeting, you can't say, you can't join because I don't like what you might say. It's like saying to someone coming up to a dais, oh, you back there, number five, standing in line, you can't speak because in the past you said something that we didn't like. You know, when you have an open public meeting on the record, on a Zoom type of thing, everyone's welcome until they're not welcome anymore.
I would like to separate the Zoom from the video camera and the conference room, okay? That's another thing. But let's just get the video camera on, please. Thank you.
Yeah, like I said, I don't think I'm opposed like what we do here at the meetings. Tape it, and if someone really wants to come to a meeting and has something to say about it, then they'll make it a point to come to that committee meeting or write in an email or whatever. But like Mrs. Sidino said, you open it up as a Zoom to the public, you're going to get people from all over. And, right, so.
Yeah, I think one-way communication at least is better than nothing today. At least we can report on stream. There are a lot of working parents, you know, with hard hours and everything. Not everybody can come in today to really observe what's going on. This is another avenue for them to at least receive the content. We can take a call at, should we even allow bidirectional later point?
Right. So if somebody wants to see it and can't at that time, then they watch it later on and then they either come to a board meeting or, like I said, you write into an email, you write into a board member or whatever and discuss it then.
This is something we could discuss, a policy, and I think it's a good idea, so we'll vet it and deliberate.
Well, we're going to discuss it, I think, discussing it here. Like we talk about being more transparent, have the discussion as a board, not, you know, a few people at a policy meeting.
Oh, no, absolutely, but we're not going to make a determination tonight, Madam President.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, if we're going to have the conversation...
That even helps us. Like, you know, all of us, most of us up here have kids that are so, that are involved, and we can't make every meeting. And there's, like you always, like, there's like meetings that I can't attend to that I don't know what goes on. So at least if I can go watch it later on, at least I can do that. And if I have something to say, which I probably would, then I say it. So I don't, I'm not opposed to that, but I do think that that's a better way than a Zoom. That's just my opinion.
Any other comments on it? Joe, any old and new business?
No, I just... Marjorie, I didn't take her stenography and use it. I abbreviated it.
Did I tell?
Those are my words.
Those are my words. Those are my words.
Those were some of your words. I just wanted to congratulate over the last, I guess, 24 hours between yesterday, we were here for the scholarships for the students, tonight, Teacher of the Year, the foundation grant money. So the last 24 hours have been a nice celebration, part of being a part of the board. So this room was filled with a lot of good stuff the last 24 hours, so congratulations to everybody.
Oh, one more thing. I attended this morning, McDivitt School, they had a helicopter, state trooper helicopter come in from Trenton, and there was 500 kids. The excitement and the electricity in the air when it came down and took off, it lasted about an hour and a half. And the troopers, they answered a lot of questions. So each class, they came up at one, I believe she has four sections from kindergarten right through fifth grade, am I right? So each class, they had questions, and it lasted about an hour and a half. It was fantastic. I really enjoyed it.
Christina?
One, I have a question. Have we heard about the fourth option yet for the Colander? Or are we still waiting on that?
I believe it's coming next month because with the budget and the teacher, it was just an elongated meeting. So that's my understanding is it's next month.
Okay. Again, I just want to congratulate all the teachers, all the ESPs that did win Teacher of the Year this year. Again, I think every teacher deserves to be celebrated, and it's even more validation when you get that award. And, you know, you guys really do run the district, and you guys really do help our kids in everything, not just for school. You know, some of these teachers become second parents and, you know, to all of our kids. So again, thank you to all, congratulations to all the winners. I think that's all I have for today.
Mr. Dunn?
Thank you. A couple things.
All right, fine, then go this way. Fine, Alina.
All right. So just a couple of things I wanted to say. There are so many invitations coming in for the board, and I just want to say thank you to everybody who invites us to come out to stuff. We have directors, building administrators, teachers that are, you know, just inviting us to be in the schools, and it is my favorite place to be. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that asks the board to come out. I will do my best to come to as many things as I physically possibly can, so keep the invitations coming. I just wanted to say that last night was awesome. We had scholarship night, and it was really amazing to see all the families of the graduating seniors come together. And like Jay said, it's just been 24 hours of, you know, just joy. And I think honestly, my hands actually hurt from clapping so much. So that was pretty awesome. I wanted to just quickly talk about Civil War Day at Sandberg, also becoming one of my favorite things to attend. I know Mrs. Bracken kind of leads that up, and she does an amazing job of just bringing history to life in Sandberg, so that was super fun. And my daughter was an eighth grader this year, so I got to, you know, find her, and Margie helped me embarrass her a little bit, so it was good. Sandberg Band Concert I went to, and I, I'm not like a music genius or person, I mean, it's like another language to me, but I mean, I really felt like I was listening to a group of high schoolers play. Mrs. Nee does an amazing job with the kids, especially with the time she's given with them. It's pretty amazing what she puts together. I really enjoyed that. And I know that Joseph Lonsfama isn't here anymore, but I wanted to thank him for serving as our liaison from the board to the students at the high school. So great job to him, and I wish him the best of luck as he graduates. Thank you.
Is it my turn? Talking about Civil War Day, I went, Alina went, Jen and Jay went, but the weather didn't cooperate, so we had to go into the auditorium. We, they did a really nice, like trivia kind of contest, and Jay and I sat next to a student, and when the student asked us who we were, because he didn't know if we were with the Civil War Day or whatever, we said we were on the board, and he got really excited and he wanted to take a picture with us. And then he asked, and he asked if we would mention something at the board meeting. And what I love about it is we later found out that his mom is Jaclyn Pepe, one of the Teachers of the Year from McDivitt, but he didn't invoke her name, he didn't write on her coattails. He just did this on his own, and he asked if we would please mention that he would like as many people as possible to come out to register for Sarwood South Little League. So I'm passing that information along, so when registration opens up, Brandon Pepe would like you to come out and register, so.
And also, Marjorie knew the answer to every question that was asked at trivia night day. Every answer.
I'm a teacher.
It was actually annoying.
Sal?
Yes. Old business, I'd like to congratulate the recipients of the scholarships of last night and the awards of tonight. So congratulations to the students and staff members that we have here. New business, Policy 167 was brought up at the committee meetings. We brought up how, especially during the controversial topics, people use the five minutes to basically pontificate their emotions, and we believed we had a consensus that people could state their points succinctly and concisely in the three-minute mark. And our email is always open. I respond to every email with questions directed at me that I'm able to answer, and those are of course unlimited, so people do have basically unlimited speech to get access to all of us. And it goes back to the Zoom argument, how if you have meetings on Zoom, anyone could come and basically, you know, say whatever they want in a bad way. So just like limiting, cutting off Zoom, cutting it off to three minutes gives people the opportunity to speak, but yet it keeps them concise, honest, and to the point. But we do have a second reading, so we'll probably get more feedback on that. But that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Dunn?
Thank you, Madam President. A few items. Number one, board retreat. Have we come up with a plan to meet as a board? I know there was some discussion about that.
I think it was trying to figure out with the calendar, and we were having a lot of budget meetings, so we can revisit that.
Yes, please. I think that the synergy is growing on this board. I think that we're working pretty well together, and I want to continue that. I think that when we have board retreats, it causes more synergy, and I think when we become more friendly towards each other, I think it really becomes a better element to our discussions, and we find common ground. And this board has grown over the last year, I think, because there is respect, there is a lot of good that's happening, and we're understanding each other, and I think that's going to be better for all of us. So I would like to, you know, make sure that we look at a board retreat. Also, I think that, I think Board Member Mazzone had mentioned some sort of fundraiser or some sort of sporting event, the board against whomever. I think that's a great idea. That's going to be a team-building event, and I think that the more we do to help our relationship and also relationship with our peers out in Old Bridge, I think we'll go really, really a long way. Fundraisers, I think, are important, and also shared services. I know that it's been 10 days since we last discussed, has there been any kind of conversation with our colleagues from this town council regarding?
Did you put the email request in to make the meeting?
Yes, I did, Madam President, the day after the meeting. And so I'm not harping on it, I'm not asking, I just said, I'm not asking Dave for anything. I'm just asking, have we reached out to the town council to coordinate some sort of conversation with them?
I worked on a spreadsheet with the township BA, and we re-talked about our revenues and expenses as was requested, so we're working on that. I think the last email I saw was Ms. Antuno had reached out to you if you had any dates in mind, and I don't know there was a response on that, so.
No, I did not respond on Friday when I got the email, but I will respond. But my question was if there was any dialogue. Very well.
I had, I had dialogue with the township BA, yes.
Thank you. That concludes my few seconds. Thank you, Madam President.
Yes, I just want to add that the Kelly Services paraprofessional that was recognized tonight, there is a motion on the agenda that as part of that recognition, this, it was out of all its national recognition, that the school that she is currently working in in Chirratt also received $1,500 from Kelly Services, and the paraprofessional received $5,000 from Kelly Services. So it was a big deal for their company and honoring, and they appreciated that she was able to be recognized here tonight. So I just wanted to show that.
And you said nationally, she was the one chosen across the nation, and she's here. That's amazing.
Yes, and she's here in Old Bridge.
That's amazing. That's awesome. I, kind of echoing some of the other comments of thank you for all the invitations, you know, it's trying to fit it all in. As Christina says all the time, I don't know how any of us have real jobs because we're always attending these, which is good. In the past 24 hours, last night and this morning, attending the scholarship nights, I want to thank the Old Bridge Police Department for coming out. They partnered with the county, and they had cones and golf carts and the DUI goggles driving around for the sophomore, junior, and seniors. They also help with the car that's parked in front of the high school to deter against drunk driving now that it's prom season. So thank you for coming for that. And it was great to see the community come together for the mental health fair today in the high school. Watched a lot of students walk around, interact with each other, interact with different companies, and, you know, thank you to everyone that supported not only the students at the mental health fair, but the staff as well. So those are my two cents. I hope the juniors have a great time at prom on Thursday. I know the weather is not cooperating, but we hope you have a great time as well, and the seniors at prom next Friday. And for the elementary schools having field day this week and coming up, I hope you guys have a great time. So, anything else? Anyone have anything else?
I do.
Go ahead.
Oh. When I think of great, like, sports dynasties, I think of, I hate to say, like the Islanders of the 80s, I could throw the Yankees in there, of course, 26 World Series championships, even the football chiefs. But you have to recognize the boys volleyball team, GMC champions again this year. I don't, it might be five years in a row. That's amazing, great coaching, and great athletes with the support of their families. One other topic I just want to bring up, because it was something Mr. Dunn had stated, and it just, when, like, certain things makes your hair stand up on the back, just what's wrong with that thought? It sounds like a great thought of the Title I, we don't know, because, you know, the federal government doesn't even know where it's going with the Department of Education right now, so Title I funds, when are we going to know? And is it a good idea for us to support that locally and for those children who would normally get the Title I funds, support it? And I think already Dr. Tui's let us know that last year, Title I costs were $77,000. Now, here's the caution in what I'm saying, and get legal advice and what you would, what that would be, because according to the Title I website, as soon as we pay for it locally, we take our local funds to support that program, the next year, we can't put it back on Title I funds, because that's called supplanting. Title I funds can only supplement what we do. So if we had an after, a summer program for students who fall under the, in the poverty range, and that we were paying for locally, we could take Title I funds to do something above and beyond what we're doing locally. But as soon as we take over funding Title I, even it's a benevolent idea of the board, as soon as we do that in '25, '26, in '26, '27, you can't take Title I funds and pay for that program again, because you've already paid for it local funds, and that would be their definition of now you're supplanting and not supplementing. So even a great idea of wanting to do better for our, to help support our students would be a dangerous idea, because then we'd never be able to use those funds again. So something to look into and make sure we have the right legal advice on that.
Is it possible for that fundraiser that I was talking about, is it possible to maybe do something over the summer? Like after school, after all, like the hecticness slows down a little bit, would we be able to do something like that over the summer?
We could do it whenever, you know, and not have access to school. You'd have to do like, say if you did volleyball, you did it at, like, Geig Park, you know, outside, have access to.
Why don't you, like, maybe you can, like, have a shared service agreement partnership with, like, the township on Saltwater Day, and have a dunk tank, and.
And we'll be dunking.
You can get in there, and if the public wants to pay, they can choose. Do they want to dunk the superintendent, or they want to dunk a board member?
Oh, God.
Whoever, whoever wants to get dunked more, you know, the more money goes towards it, you know, that's where the money goes, so.
I still think like a volleyball game is like the best thing.
Oh, boy, volleyball game, I just see a lot of it.
You might raise more money on that dunk thing.
Hey, we had a good softball game against the town council, and I believe we beat them pretty damn good, if we remember correctly.
Yes, and that was 17 years ago, and you were a lot quicker back then.
I was a lot heavier too, Mr. Sidino.
All right. Any last comments? All right. A motion to go into executive session?
Mazzone motion. Yes.
All right. Thank you all for coming. Hope everyone has a great Memorial Day. Remember the reason why we are celebrating Memorial Day. Enjoy your Monday off. And the high schoolers are testing this week, right? Ninth and 11th grade, so good luck to them on their tests. Thank you. Have a safe night.
I thought maybe we could have one group picture. I don't think we'll get this set up again, all of us.
He wants Scott to take a group picture on the stage as is?
Over, we think, you know.